Greetings everyone, welcome to the Campaign for Humanity Town Hall Meeting on Sunday, October, what is today, the 9th, 2016. I want to thank you for joining us for a series of our Town Hall Meetings. This is the second of three that we are hosting during the course of the month of October. And that will ultimately culminate, of course, with the election that will take place on November 8th. I want to thank you for joining us tonight. For those of you that are new, I'm going to give you a few minutes, give a few minutes to get in the room here because I know that there's a lot of people still watching football games that are in various stages of finishing up for the evening. But for those of you that are new to the Campaign for Humanity, let me let you know that what we are doing here is we are conducting a political campaign where I am your candidate for community servant for all of humanity. And we're going to talk more about that as time goes on. We're going to obviously ask you to get involved in supporting the cause of humanity. And I'm going to explain some ways that you can do that as well. And during the course of this campaign, we have had a campaign kickoff. We laid out our platform for the campaign, which you can see at CampaignForHumanity.com. I want to thank Rob Brown and Rebecca Geddes for coming in and joining us this evening. See, somebody else is in here, but they haven't shown up in the screen in the feed yet. Ah, Charles Luttrell, thank you for joining us, Charles. Robin Tenille, thank you for joining us. Now the household names, the regulars, the villagers are all packing it in here. Thank you for joining us, Robin. So, just in case you're not used to being on this type of a livestream event. William Murray, welcome. Sean McCullough, welcome. I guess we're just going to take a minute, let people get in the room comfortably. I'm actually looking into the camera here and I'm also looking down below to see notes. Like I just saw that Charles says hello Glenn, thank you for joining us, Charles. Had a great conversation with Charles today. I'm really looking forward to some opportunities to work together. I'm all about collaboration, apparently so is Charles. So that's going to probably work out just great. With that in mind, let me explain a little bit about what the Campaign for Humanity is all about. We're running a political campaign where I'm running for community servant for all of humanity. And the election process is going to be a very special one because we're not really looking for you to show up at a polling place and vote in a traditional way. What we're asking you to do is two things. We're asking you to support this campaign by inviting people you know to join the Village Connector Community, which is our platform, our program for fulfilling our platform. And you can do that by going to villageconnector.com. And when you get to the website, at the very bottom of the website, there is a place where you can join our community mailing list, which makes sure that you are tied into all the information that we're sharing, including educational content, events in the community, events like this, things that you need to know about to stay tuned in so that you don't miss anything. The other way that you can help is by getting on the mailing list yourself and inviting your friends, but also doing what you see people doing right now, which is sharing this video. As we are broadcasting tonight, sharing this out with people who are following you or who are friends with you. Assegad Hepwold, thank you for joining us. Good afternoon, good evening to Paul Kirkpatrick. Anik Singal, welcome to the broadcast, my dear friend. Oh man, the house is packed tonight. We're getting a good response tonight, that's fantastic. I'm so glad to be able to address you tonight for a number of reasons. We want to have this dialogue with you on a regular basis so that we are really looking at coming up with true solutions to the challenges that are faced in our local communities. I believe that we have everything we need with a little bit of muscle from ourselves individually, a little skin in the game from each of us individually, to solve the majority of the challenges that we face in our local communities. And those challenges that cannot be solved by us individually or collectively within a local community, frankly, if we work on everything else that can get done, they will pale in comparison to some of the drama and chaos that gets created when we sit by and just watch nothing getting done. So, the Campaign for Humanity is all about getting people to understand that the little bit that we each can do individually to add value in our communities is enough when we work together and combine them. And that's essentially what the Campaign for Humanity is all about. And that's why it's important, if you want, if you believe in what I just shared with you, if you believe in that, then that's why it's important for you to invite your friends, your family members, your classmates, your colleagues, your coworkers, to come and join us here. Because we need everybody's little bit, we need everybody's input to really make a big difference. But if everyone does a lot, or everyone does a little, no one will have to do a lot. And the reason for that is that many hands make light work. If we're all working together, we can move down the track, move down the road a lot faster than if we're all trying to do it on our own initiative. Let's carpool to success. That's basically what we're talking about. Working together, we're basically carpooling together for success. So with that in mind, again, I want to thank everyone for joining us tonight. While we are waiting to get started officially, please share this broadcast right now on your newsfeed by clicking the share button. Let me know that you're here. Oh yes, Chris K, absolutely. Compounding effects don't just add up, they multiply exponentially. So thank you, and see, again, the Campaign for Humanity is about attracting people who get this. Attracting the right people to this movement is going to make it possible for us to influence and to positively affect our communities and ultimately our own lifestyles in the process. So I want to thank Chris for joining us tonight. Chris is someone who I've just been introduced to by another dear friend that's in here, Sean McCullough. And Chris, we need to pick up our conversation again. Don't think I forgot about that. I've been working to get ready for this event tonight. And so I'm hoping to get back on track with finishing our conversation early next week. So, thanks again for joining us tonight. So tonight, I had expected to do two things. Number one, I was expecting to be able to reveal the Village Connector Education System, which is the deliverable, if you will, that satisfies our campaign promise of being able to address education, health and wellness, and personal and community economics before the date of the election. Now, the good news is, we are still on track to be three weeks ahead of schedule because we're going to launch it next weekend. We ran into some technology challenges this weekend that resulted in our, the train slowing down but not stopping. And we're so close to having this exactly the way I want it that I thought it would be better for us to go ahead and finish our work and launch the education center next weekend. So that's exactly what we're going to do. We're going to be reconvening for our third Town Hall Meeting, our second this month, on October 16th at 7:00 PM, that's next Sunday, at 7:00 PM Eastern. We'll be coming back to reveal the Village Connector Education System, the Village Connector Education Center, which is the foundational deliverable for our platform for the Campaign for Humanity. I think you're going to love it. I know we've been working very hard around the clock to get this together in a way that will really benefit our entire community. And it's going to be something you can be proud to share with others. So with that in mind, I hope you'll come back next Sunday, 7:00 PM, same time, just a week from today, to hear and to see what we have been at work putting together to make it easy for you to invest in yourself through personal development, to address living a balanced living lifestyle from a wellness perspective and to get your personal and community economics in order. And we're going to be talking with, talking about all of those things. Welcome Doria Musaga, thank you for taking time out to join us this evening and thank you for chatting with me earlier today. Doria is one of our Wellness Task Force members, so maybe this is a good time for me to tell you that in addition to launching the Learning Center next week, the Education Center, we're going to also identify the task force members for our Personal Development Task Force, our Education Task Force, our Wellness Task Force, of which Doria is a member, and our Personal and Community Economics Task Force, which I will be chairing until we find someone else who would like to relieve me of responsibility for being the chair of that community, of that, of that particular group. With that in mind, there's a lot to look forward to next week. We've got a lot to share with you. I'm also going to let you know that next week, we are going to address a very important issue, a very important discussion that's taking place in the presidential election. And that discussion is centered around taxes and what people are paying in taxes. We've been hearing a lot this week, especially this week, about what the various candidates have paid or not paid in taxes. And what we're going to do is we're going to take the high road on this. We're not going to do what you see in the mainstream media. We're going to spend some time understanding what the tax code is all about and why things are the way they are so that regardless of which candidate you support, you can have a better understanding of what the media is leaving out of the equation when they position you with what they want you to know about who paid taxes and who didn't. So we're going to address it from a different, a different standpoint. And it's going to be educational. It's not going to just be a matter of trying to evoke emotion out of you. We're hopefully going to be able to bring some logic to what's being done and what's being discussed in the media. And even though from my perspective, our goal was to stay away from some of the controversial issues that are taking place in the, in the presidential election, I think that this is an important issue to address because it directly affects our personal and community economics initiative and our personal and community economics section of the Education Center. So this is why we're going to address it, because it fits in with our theme. You notice that there's a lot of other things going on in the presidential election that we're not addressing because they're not advancing the cause of humanity to have dialogue about them. We're going to focus on the things that move us forward, not the things that divide us. And that's essentially, that's the essence. That's the seminal principle behind which the Campaign for Humanity is being pursued. So I want to thank Tim Nebergall, a very dear friend, a village elder, who is part of our team here at Village Connector. And the good news is that Tim is playing a very active role in helping us to bring the Learning Center into fruition for you and also helping us to position the website so that we can start attracting our community of servants and really moving this forward in a big way. I feel like we are a train that has been sitting in the station waiting for its opportunity to head down the tracks. And we're slowly starting the motion of that train. And you know, if you know anything about trains, you know that it takes a lot of energy to move it forward when it's idle. But once you get it in motion, once you get it moving down the track, it's almost impossible to stop it. And that is exactly what this movement is going to be. It's going to be impossible to stop it from achieving the objective of evolving humanity. One person at a time. And that's what we're looking to do here with the Campaign for Humanity. So, Tim, it says, "It's my vision," and he's just an engineer, but you know what, Tim is much more than an engineer. He is a strategist. He's an idea guy. He is, he is a heart-centered individual who adds a lot of value to the energy that we all are bringing to this project. So, in any event, Doria, listen, I agree with you that the tax code is a daunting, it's a daunting task to consider how many pages the tax code consists of. But listen, there's some very simple, there's some very simple principles associated with the tax code where we don't have to go page by page by page to understand what it's all about. And again, since our mission is an educational one, I'm proud to be able to have a dialogue with you next week. I almost decided to do it this week, but I want to say something, give you a reason to come back. Give you a full week to invite your colleagues and if you have anybody else out here that you see ranting about, you know, what so-and-so should have paid and what so-and-so should have paid, get them to come next week so we can figure out exactly what the tax code is all about. I promise it will be educational. I promise it will not be finger pointing. And I promise that when we're done, we will all leave that discussion with a better understanding of where we can benefit by what is currently the law of the land here in the United States. Now, with that in mind, I want to welcome Jeff Fell to the, to the broadcast. Thank you so much for joining us. And so, let's just recap very quickly. So, next weekend, we're going to launch the Education Center and we're going to reveal that to you and share with you exactly what you need to take advantage of it. We're also going to announce the task force members for our personal development, our wellness and our community economics, our personal and community economics initiative. We're going to announce all of those people that are on those task forces and give you a way to get in touch with them. So if any of those topics interest you, you'll be able to be in direct communication with them and know who they are. So, this is a good time for me to encourage the people who are currently watching to please invite others to join this community. There's, there's basically three things now that I think about that I'm going to ask you to do. Number one, get on the mailing list yourself at villageconnector.com. Most of you already are on the mailing list, I thank you for that. The second thing is join the Facebook group if you're not already a member of the Facebook group. The last thing is to like the Village Connector Community Fan Page so that we can gain greater prominence in the Facebook search engines so that more people become aware organically of this effort and will be able to plug in and benefit along with us by helping us to move this project forward. So, anyway, what is Tim saying here? "We should all know taxes are an option, you don't have to be a billionaire." Well, you know, Tim, you're stealing my thunder a little bit, but I'm glad somebody else understands that. So we'll have a little talk next week about it. And I promise the people who will take the time to listen in that we will have a much more edifying version of the tax code than what you're currently seeing in mainstream media. Now, that's enough about setting the stage for next week. Please come back next week. Now, this is what we're going to do tonight. I have had a number of people in my dialogue with, you know, just sharing the word about the Campaign for Humanity and the Village Connector Program. I've had a number of people asking questions. And that's what a Town Hall is designed to do, is to be here to answer questions. And so what I did was, I've made a list of four of the most frequently asked questions from people that I've had a personal dialogue with. I also gave people in the group an opportunity to ask questions, but there weren't, there weren't any there. But I, but I did go back to my email and was able to pull questions and to recall questions that people had been asking me when I'm speaking with them personally. So I thought that I would share the most commonly asked questions so that we can make sure that you get answers to those questions. Now, one of the commonly asked questions, and I'm not going to address in great detail, one of them was a very simple one, which is, after I shared some of these other things, "How can I get involved?" And I've already addressed that. You can get involved by going to the website at villageconnector.com and joining our community email list so that you don't miss, you don't miss anything, you don't miss any information, you don't miss events, you don't miss opportunities to get plugged in to resources that we're accumulating here for your benefit and for the benefit of our, all of our neighbors, all of our villagers. You can also get involved by becoming a community servant yourself. We actually are setting people who are committed to do some type of volunteer activity in their local community, we're willing to set you up with your own profile, just like mine, on the Village, on the Community Servant, I'm sorry, the Campaign for Humanity website, where you can have all of your contact information, information about your community activity, all featured right on that website. We'll even conduct either an audio or video interview with you to talk with you about your project. And it doesn't have to be something completely new. It could be something that you've been doing for years. Maybe you're a Boy Scout or Girl Scout troop leader, or you volunteer to coach Little League, or you're working with some other volunteer cause in your community. We want to highlight and showcase you to the rest of the community so that they can support you and be inspired by you. See, a lot of times people see you doing something good in the community and they decide for themselves to do that with you or to do something themselves that also benefits the community. So we need to start focusing the media attention on people that are making a difference in the community rather than people that are just drawing media attention for the sake of the attention itself. I want to welcome Claudia Gadson, Rebecca, and Anita Hicks, two very dear friends that have been part of the Village Community for some time now. I would consider them to be village elders. They've been around long enough to have earned that title. And I want to thank them for joining us tonight for the Campaign for Humanity Town Hall. Now, one of the other things that's important for us to do is to answer your questions. So during the course of the week, as you have questions, please post those in the Facebook group. It's a great idea for you to share the questions that you have because frankly, for every person that asks a question, there's probably 10 or 15 at least more people that also would benefit from knowing the answer to that question. So when you ask your questions, I promise to use my time and attention to get you good answers to those questions. And frankly, if it's something that I don't know the answer to, I will get the answer to it. So, let me share with you the first question that has become a recurring one in the dialogue that I've been having as I've been talking with people about our initiative, the Campaign for Humanity, and about the Village Connector Community. The first question was, "Why was education your first focus and how does that help our communities?" So, when we talk about communities, we're talking about people all over, not just the area in Maryland or just the country, but all over the world. So, one of the reasons that we chose to address education first was because going all the way back to when we started this initiative, we asked you of the three things that we were going to include in our platform, which one did you think was the most important to do first? And you all said education, that was what the majority of opinion was. So we decided to focus on the education initiative first because of feedback we received from fellow villagers. But education was a focus for us, even if it wasn't going to be the first one. But education was going to be a focus one way or the other. And one of the reasons that education is the focus is because I truly believe that in order for us to so-called change the world, we have to start by changing ourselves. We have to become better at who we are and what we do. And the only way I know to do that is to invest in yourself through education. Now, there's two types of education, and we focus on the second type. There's formal education, which we're all familiar with, going to school, grade school, going to college, going to grad school. That's formal education. And certainly formal education has its role in whatever we're doing career-wise and in our lives. But a very important part of our educational experience is this second type of education that we're focusing on here at Village Connector, and that is self-education. Sometimes we hear the media and academics talking about self-education as being soft skills. Things like leadership and confidence and communication and self-esteem and character and passion and motivation. All of these are things that people consider to be so-called soft skills. And they say that in a way, sometimes it makes it sound like they're less significant than the academic pursuits. But the truth is, I have found that the soft skills are the foundation upon which the academic pursuits should be built. And so, even though we sometimes get them in reverse order because we go to college before we learn what the real world is like and need to know about leadership and motivation and passion, when there's no school teacher chasing after you to get your homework done and when you realize that your boss is only going to babysit you a certain amount of time before you're going to be looking for another job, that's when the soft skills become relevant because that's when you've got to find a way to motivate yourself to have some character with respect to how you pursue your profession on behalf of your employer or more importantly, how you decide to make your mark in the world possibly through your own business or your own activities in the community. So, education for us is important because it equips us to be better every day at who we are and what we do. And our goal here at Village Connector is to help people understand that it's not a monumental task. You don't have to go away to college for four years to engage in a consistent education experience for yourself that benefits both you and your community. You see, as we invest in ourselves through personal development by developing new skills, new ways of thinking, new ideas, we are becoming better and more valuable to ourselves individually. But we are also becoming better and more valuable to the people in our circle of influence. And that includes our neighbors here in the village. So think about this. If everyone in the village was investing in themselves to develop new talents, new skills, new ideas, new capabilities, and then we were all pooling our resources and working together, how much faster could we accelerate the pace at which this train is moving down the track? That is why we focus on education. We want to help you be the best you can be at who you are and what you do knowing that as you educate yourself through self-education, you will see the value of being in a community like this where you can now work together with other people, be inspired by them, and ultimately pool your resources in a way that help us all to move forward together. We've always heard this acronym, TEAM, together, everyone achieves more. It's absolutely true. The problem is that we are sometimes negatively affected in our effort to work together by allowing ourselves to be distracted by what's going on around us. Especially when we look at what's being reported on television and frankly, even in some of our social networks these days. There's a very important quote I want to share with you. It's one of my favorites and it kind of forms the foundation of what the Campaign for Humanity and Village Connector is all about. And it's this, "Great minds discuss ideas, average minds discuss events, and small minds discuss people." Those are the words of Eleanor Roosevelt. And I believe that Ms. Roosevelt had it absolutely right. You see, when we spend our time talking about ideas, we get inspired, we get excited, we get motivated, and especially when we're in the company of other people who are having that dialogue with us. And it's a very high level of communication, a very high energetic level of communication. When we allow ourselves to devolve in discussing events, which is what's happening most of the time in the media when you're watching the news, so-called breaking news. And it doesn't matter whether it's a police shooting in Ferguson or whether it's somebody that, you know, broke the law, did something else or, or something that's going on politically, it doesn't matter what it is. If we're giving our time and attention to that type of thing, we're not doing anything that advances us forward because most of those things are things that we don't plan on doing anything about them. So the amount of time that we spend thinking about them or giving time and attention to them is actually a distraction to the things we could be doing, that little bit that we could be doing. So, we don't want to spend a lot of time thinking about the chaos and drama that the media tries to put in front of us. And worse than anything is gossip. So when we spend our time talking about other people or entertaining what people are saying about other people when it's, when it's for the gossip purpose versus an educational purpose, we have allowed ourselves to dilute our energy in a way that just doesn't advance the ball for anyone. So here at Village Connector and the Campaign for Humanity, we want to be at the highest level of existence, which is discussing ideas, thinking about ways that we can work together, not allowing ourselves to be divided. You see, we will always have more in common with each other than we will ever have that divides us. So we need to stop focusing on the things that make us different and focus on the things that we have in common. You see, in doing that, we learn to work together. We learn to respect each other naturally by focusing on the things that we can do together. And in the process of working together, we start to develop a healthy respect for each other so that when we do have things that we differ on, we can have an intelligent, objective, and productive dialogue about those things rather than ranting at each other through protests and picketing and boycotting and a lot of the other things that take place in the world today. The truth is, if we got everyone together in a boycott and actually decided to do something productive, like sit down and talk about ways that we can resolve issues, that would be a 10x improvement on what normally happens at some of these things that happen in the community. Now, of course, it takes a new way of thinking to engage in that. It takes people being willing to try something different, something new. But there's absolutely no reason why that couldn't happen if enough people committed to do it. And that is what the Campaign for Humanity is all about. Pulling together the people who are ready to try something new, try something motivational, try something that will bring us together rather than to separate us. So, in any event, I want to encourage you to be truly part of the solution. They say, and I think that it was, I think it was Gandhi that said, "Be the change you wish to see in the world. Be the change you wish to be, see in the world." So what it really means is it starts with each of us individually. If you want the world to be a better place, start by becoming better yourself. If you do that and then combine that with the energy of others through what we're doing here with Village Connector, then it won't be long before you'll start to see better results than what we're currently seeing in the real, in the so-called real world. So I want to encourage you to take this seriously. We're taking it very seriously. It's why we're here on a Sunday night. I'm missing football games to be able to hopefully advance the cause of humanity. And you are too, so I appreciate that and I respect you for it. So, that's why we focused on the education initiative first. Another question that comes up is, "Does health and wellness", this is part of, one of our, one of our platform initiatives, is a health and wellness initiative. And so, the question comes, "Does health and wellness include alternatives to our current health insurance system?" And the short answer to that is, yes, but not directly. In other words, our campaign initiative on health and wellness isn't about replacing the Affordable Care Act as some of the politicians in the current electoral process or elections. We're not looking to change something that would take, you know, again, the energy away from what we're doing here. Our health and wellness initiative is designed to help people focus on living a wellness-based lifestyle. When you live a wellness-based lifestyle, you find yourself not needing to treat sickness and illness as much because you're staying well. And when you are keeping yourself balanced in a wellness lifestyle, then you also excel at everything else in your life. When you feel good, when you're in shape, when you're well-nourished and things of that nature, you do better at work, you do better in your career, you do better at play, you do better in just enjoying vacation. How many of us go on vacation and we're malnutritioned and we're out of shape and we, you know, we really needed to recharge our batteries but we can't even get up and enjoy the vacation because it takes too much energy? When you are hitting on all cylinders, you enjoy every other aspect of your life and then you become less dependent on things like health insurance. So, the more people we can help to live a balanced wellness lifestyle, the more we're going to need insurance less or to focus on insurance less. Now, again, we've been very discreet and very discriminating in where we chose to focus our energy. Now, again, we've been very discreet and very discriminating in where we chose to focus our energy because we wanted to do something we knew we can have an impact with and that all of us cumulatively can have an impact with. So the wellness initiative is about teaching you the things that you need to know to live a balanced wellness lifestyle. And so we will talk about nutrition, we will talk about exercise, fitness, we will talk about emotional wellness, we will talk about what you can do to implement those things in your life, and hopefully, some of you will begin implementing those things by taking that and making that your mission in your community. Let me give you an example. A very simple wellness initiative is to start a community walk in your neighborhood where you and your neighbors get together to walk every day. And in the process of doing that, not only are you engaging in a physical activity that adds to your wellness, you're also getting a chance to get to know and to talk with your neighbors. Today, it's amazing how many people live next door to a neighbor and don't know the name of the people that live next door to them. And the bottom line is that we need to stop that because when you start to get to know people, you start to care about them. When you care about them and everyone cares about each other, then we don't have the ability, the media doesn't have the ability to divide us the way that they do currently. So what I'm saying to you is that something as simple as taking responsibility for a wellness initiative in your community where you just organize a community walk, it starts with just getting two or three people to go, and each of you invited two or three more, now you've got 15 or 20 people going, and it just goes on and on and on from that. And of course, the more people engaging in this type of activity, the better people will be because they'll know each other at a higher level, they'll be discussing ideas when they get together, and they can do this all on a multitasking basis. So it has multiple effects that are very positive. So that's just one of many examples. You'll come up with better examples than the one I just gave, I guarantee it. And I would encourage you to share those in the Village Connector Community Facebook group so that we can all benefit from them. That's the nice thing about being a community, is that when we start sharing because we care, everybody benefits. So it's a great way for you to give back to the community. Another question that comes up is, "Is this campaign just about Maryland or is it nationwide?" The quick answer to that is that this has always been and always will be a worldwide initiative. We're starting in our base, which is here in Maryland, and we're also spreading already around the country as I look at who's joining the community. We've had over 60 people that have joined just in the last week and a half, largely thanks to Sean McCullough, who's been an ambassador for this program like no other. And I really appreciate his effort, I appreciate his energy, and I appreciate his commitment and passion for what we're doing. The truth is that there's a lot of Sean McCulloughs in our community. We just need to wake you up and get you moving towards understanding how important it is and how much of a difference it makes when you take the time to invite other people to join this cause. At the end of this room, there's a door that leads out of our suite and into the hallway, and on that door, there's a plaque that says, "Run with a hundred, but don't drag one." And that's meant to symbolize the fact that we're going to work with the willing. We're going to work with people who are ready to take action. We're going to work with people who want to be part of the solution and just need to know how. We're going to give you the how as long as you will give us your time, attention, and your energy. And it's not going to be the kind of thing where it's going to take a lot of your time or a lot of your energy. If everyone does a little, no one has to do a lot. And that's all we're looking for, just the little bit that you're willing to do, whatever that is. If you woke up every day and just invited one person to join the community, and you did that for an entire year, you would have been responsible for 365 people or more becoming part of this initiative. Because if each of them started inviting, you would have created a ripple across the pond that would have resulted in literally hundreds, if not thousands, of other people becoming part of this initiative, benefiting and benefiting others. So please don't underestimate the value of a little bit. It doesn't take much effort for each of us to commit to invite just one person a day. If we did that consistently, if everyone did it, the energy in here would be incredible. And that's what we're looking for. We're looking to create some energy. We're looking to create some momentum because we want to create a success avalanche in every community that we touch. And we can do that, but it starts with everyone being committed to helping do their part. So this initiative is a worldwide initiative. It's starting wherever it starts, but ultimately, it will be a worldwide movement that we are all working together for the same thing, which is to be in a position to enjoy a higher quality of life for ourselves individually, and in the process of doing that, to create a higher quality of life for everyone in our communities. So I hope that was a good answer for you. I hope that if you fact-check me on that one, you'll find it to be accurate. If anything that I say is not accurate, I want to know about it. I will not candy coat it, I will not cover it up. I will apologize and get you accurate information if you ever find that something that I'm sharing has not been accurate. How's that for a politician? Let me get to the next question. "What are you doing to help people get access to capital to start and grow businesses?" Okay, that's a great question, and that was someone that I was discussing our personal and community economics initiative with last week. They were asking because they were looking to start a business. They want to know, "How can I get the money that I need to start my business?" The short answer is that we have a number of people on the Personal and Community Economics Task Force that are working currently on an initiative that will make capital available to more local businesses, both startups and existing businesses. There is a new piece of legislation, it's not as new as it used to be because it's been around for about four years, but it's literally just getting initiated this year. It's called the JOBS Act. Now, the only connection to JOBS that it has actually is the fact that it's, as the initiative gets implemented, will create new businesses that will lead to job creation. But it really stands for, oh, now I'm going to draw a blank here. JOBS stands for, all right, somebody look that up real quick while I think about it because, oh, "Jumpstart our small businesses." Okay, there we go. It's amazing how acronyms are supposed to keep it simple, and I end up blowing that one. So the JOBS Act was about jumpstarting our small businesses. And that is a very important initiative that we have as part of our community economics platform, our initiative here for community economics. And it starts with taking what's in that act and actually being able to implement it. See, there's a lot of laws that are on the books that aren't being used to their full potential on behalf of the community. Because people don't understand them, they don't even know they're there. You know, a lot of times, we get legislation that's passed and we don't even know what it says. I mean, it's just crazy. But our goal is to make sure that the JOBS Act fully reaches its full potential by creating an opportunity for small locally-owned businesses that are just getting started or growing to reach their full potential. Because we know that small business is the engine that fuels prosperity in our local communities. And we have the ability to have and say in that, to have some control over it. You know, your vote is important in the presidential election. But in the scheme of things, it probably is not going to have a major impact the way that contributing your time in your local community could. So while I encourage everyone to vote, I also encourage you to spend more time doing things in your local community. So we're going to be teaching through this initiative how you can become an investor under the JOBS Act in local businesses and actually create prosperity for yourself, but also make it an opportunity for somebody else with a business to create prosperity for themselves and for the rest of the community. And as William Murray has just pointed out now, if everyone does a little, nobody has to do a lot. So I want to welcome Donna Kirkpatrick to the broadcast. That's, I won't say the better half, that's the other half because, you know, I guess it would be politically correct to say the better, the other half. But I'll leave it up to Paul and Donna to decide who the better half is. With that in mind, I want to welcome you to the broadcast tonight. It's always nice to see you. You've been a staunch supporter of what we're doing here with the Campaign for Humanity and of course, the Village Connector community, and we appreciate your involvement and your efforts. So, all right, last question, and then I'm going to entertain any questions that you might have. So if you've got questions, start thinking about them now while I answer this last question. And then we're going to wrap up because as I said, I want to be respectful of your time. I appreciate that people take out time on a Sunday evening to join us on these broadcasts, to share them with others, and I want to be respectful of your time because there's no reason in the world for you to listen to me longer than you should because we actually need to spend more time being in the doing phase. I'd rather see you spending more time inviting people to join the effort here than just sitting and listening to me answer questions, except to the extent that these questions are important. And these were good questions. So, the last question is one of my favorites. "Is there any youth programming involved in this initiative?" And the short answer is absolutely. But I want you to understand that it's all youth programming. You see, these so-called "soft skills" are things that as parents and as elders in our community, we should be making sure that our kids have access to at their earliest age possible. I firmly believe that we underestimate the capacity for our youngsters to understand principles that we believe are reserved in some fashion for adults. The truth is, if you look at what your kids are capable of with a smartphone and a computer today that you can't even think about doing on your own, why would you hold back any information from them about self-improvement, about health and wellness, about personal and community economics? These youngsters are capable of understanding, appreciating, and participating in the solution at a much higher level than we're giving them credit for. I'm telling you that if they're capable of standing up, they're capable of participating in what we're doing here. So I want you to look, when you see the Education Center, as that is the entire purpose, is a youth initiative. We're going to restore your youth by giving you a reason to live, and we're going to help you to help someone that's coming up behind you to get access at an earlier stage than you did to the information they need to create the lifestyle they deserve. So with that in mind, it's all youth initiative. So let me give you some ideas on the ways that you can implement that. If you're a parent, you can get your children involved in watching and participating in the same lessons that you'll be learning in the Learning Center. When you sit down to watch a video, pull up a couple chairs for your kids and get them to watch it too and have a discussion with them. That's how great minds can quickly and easily discuss ideas. If they're having that dialogue with you, then they're not watching the TV and learning all about the different ways that we can be divided in the community. They'll go into the world thinking that they should be looking for opportunities to collaborate, not to, you know, to compete. And that's important. You can set the tone, you can be responsible for giving that living legacy of learning to them by inviting them to sit down and watch some of the educational videos, reading the articles with you, doing some of the exercises that you'll end up doing in the Village Connector Education Center. If you are an adult, form a youth group in your local community. Get kids gathered together. If you're a coach, if you're a Boy Scout or a Girl Scout troop leader, if you work for the Boys and Girls Club, get some of this content in front of kids in your neighborhood. Invite them out to a community event where you just get them together on a Friday night or whatever. That keeps them off the street, stealing your hubcaps. And you could actually be giving them some skills and some information that will empower them to be the kinds of leaders that we can be proud to vote for in any election. And again, that's something we all can do right now. You don't need any special skills to set up a big screen TV and invite some kids over in your neighborhood to sit down and watch some of the videos that are going to be part of the Learning Center at Village Connector Education, to read an article with them from the Education Center and discuss with them what some of that stuff means. If you're a parent, get your kids involved in helping to prepare meals around the house. Teach them what quality nutrition looks like. Have them be responsible for reading about it and then implementing it in your home. You see, these are all simple things that can be done right now by anybody that's watching this broadcast. You don't have to be an elected official, you don't have to be a bureaucrat, you don't have to be in public office, you don't have to be anything except concerned about the future of humanity and the future of this world. And you can do something starting right now. You can start inviting kids to watch this instead of watching the debates tonight. You know, what are they really going to learn from the debate tonight? I'll just let you think about that, you know. I don't want to get too much into the politics because frankly, that's what's got us all divided in the first place. But here's the thing, whether they watch the debates live or not, this broadcast is being recorded, and they can go back and watch this to hopefully undo some of the drama and chaos that they're getting fed in the mainstream media. So again, there are so many ways for you to have an impact with what we're doing here. We're giving you the resources, we're giving you the ideas. We're hopefully giving you the inspiration and motivation to get out and do something with this. But here's the point, it still is up to you. You see, as much as we are able to do our bit, our bit doesn't mean anything without your bit. And that's why it's important for us to work together as a community to connect the dots. That's essentially what we're talking about here. We have to be willing to come together as a community to connect the dots with each other and with the information and resources that we're assembling. And the more dots we connect, the easier it will be for everybody involved. So your job is to be a connector, connecting the dots, helping people get plugged into what we're doing, helping yourself and your family get plugged into what we're doing. So I certainly hope that you will take this as seriously as I am because I can tell you right now, this is my life mission. One day, I'm going to tell you my story about how I started off as a lawyer and how I migrated to what we're doing today. And I can tell you right now, I have a much higher level of job satisfaction today than I did when I had my own law firm. I like to look in the mirror a lot more now than I did when I was a lawyer. And the bottom line is that we will all enjoy looking in the mirror a lot more when we are doing the things that advance ourselves and our community, and that can be done on parallel tracks. It doesn't have to be mutually exclusive. The better you become at who you are and what you do, the more valuable you become to yourself and the more valuable you become to others. So I want to encourage you to go out and to make it your mission to become the best you that you can be. And then inspire somebody else to do the same on their own. Be a mentor to somebody else by leading the way through your own example. You know, there's a gentleman who has a very good quote that I want to share with you. I can't pronounce his name. If you ask me, I'll send it to you by email or something. Maybe I'll post it in the Facebook group. But actually, there's two quotes I want to share. The first one, I can pronounce his name, is Wallace Waddles. And he says that "You owe no greater duty..." You owe to, now I can't remember the quote because I'm so energized right now. But it goes something like this. "You owe no greater duty to God and humanity than to make the most of yourself." "You do no greater good to God and humanity than to make the most of yourself." And I truly believe that. Now, that reference to God, you know, I don't want to have people, you know, be divided over religion and spirituality. So let's substitute, "You owe no greater duty to yourself and to humanity than to make the most of yourself." And that's, yeah, Mia, thank you very much for posting it. "You owe no greater duty to God and humanity than to make the most of yourself." So we're going to post that in the Facebook group. I've actually posted it previously, but obviously, the feed moves and you miss it. So I want to get back in and post that in the Facebook group for you, and I want you to write that down and carry it with you. Because if you can make it your mission to make the most of yourself and inspire somebody else to come along with you, if everyone reached just one more person with that concept, we would make short work of evolving humanity. I promise that this can be done if we take it seriously. I know that you're serious because you're here tonight. And I can assure you I'm serious because this is my mission. This is my legacy for humanity, to see that I've done my part, however minor it may be, to help to advance humanity by empowering other people to participate in the process. So I want to thank you for joining us on the Campaign for Humanity Town Hall meeting for October 9th, 2016. I want to invite you back next Sunday, same time, 7:00 PM, to talk about these very important issues that we identified. We're going to reveal the Village Connector education system, identify the members of our three task forces, and we're going to talk about this issue of unpaid taxes. My name is Glenn Garnes. I am your candidate for community servant, and I approve of this message.